Good morning. It's my pleasure to welcome everyone today. And I want to acknowledge that all the board members are here, except Ken Willard, and I don't see John Bacon. Ken is not going to be with us today. And I would assume that John's on his way. Okay? As discussed yesterday, there are changes to today's agenda. Item four will be an executive session, and that will start in a few moments for consultation with an attorney, followed by action on the Suzette Ramos licensure matter. Suspension and expulsion discussion will follow IPS survey results, and we'll talk board travel. Are there any changes or amendments to the agenda as presented for today? If not, may I have a motion for approval of the agenda for December 14th? Dean Horst moves, and Kathy Bush seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the agenda as presented for December 14th, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero. Thank you. Okay. Got my paperwork here, and we'll be gone. Carolyn Campbell will read the motion for going into executive session.
I move that we go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing the individual to be discussed. The consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney and on legal matters. The session will last no longer than 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Marty Snyder and Dr. Randy Watson to join this executive session. And I'm assuming that, okay, and Mark Ferguson, our board attorney, to join this executive session. I made the motion.
Yes.
I need a second.
Jim Porter seconds. All those in favor of moving into an executive session and approving the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero.
Now I know why y'all were sort of looking me sort of crazy. It'll start at 10 minutes after.
Well, we can start right now.
Okay.
As soon as the room clears. The next item on our agenda this morning is to review and act upon licensure matter of Suzette Ramos. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the consent agreement and order in the case of Suzette Ramos.
Thank you. Second? Second by Sally Cobble. Discussion? Comments? Thank you very much. I will call for the vote then. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, those opposed, same sign. Two. Motion passes six to two, and I believe that is the majority we need for eight, okay, for board action. Okay? I will authorize counsel to move forward with the consent. Yes, you say. You're gonna fill in the day? What's today's date? Fourteenth. I know we're going someplace now. Do I have to do this?
Whoever sends that out.
Okay. Before moving forward, I would like to commend Jim Porter and Janet Waugh for their work with Marty Snyder. And thank the Attorney General's Office for their support and help with this. Okay, Marty, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Mark, thank you. And again, thank you to Janet and Jim for their work on this and helping the board move forward. The next item on our agenda is discussion of suspension and expulsion procedures and data. We have Mr. Kent Reed, who will lead the discussion, as he walks to the podium. Kent, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good morning, board. And I'll pull up PowerPoint.
And I believe we received a handout.
Yes, I did provide a packet relative to some of the discussion points, and also a copy of the PowerPoint, so perhaps it would be easier to view. And we do have guests that I'll introduce. Dr. Marty Stessman from Shawnee Heights, USC 450, Gail Cozad, who is from Kansas Children's Services League, and Dr. Terry Garska, who is a valuator from KU. And they will explain that process after I do a quick overview of suspensions, expulsions, and the alternatives thereof.
Well, welcome, and thank you for being here.
This was a challenging presentation to put together because it is such a large, large issue. Originally, I had asked Scott Gordon, general counsel, to send me the statutes on suspension and expulsions, and there were over 10 of them. And that doesn't include students with an individual, an IEP. I almost said individual plan of study. An IEP, and...
That's what it is.
Well, you're absolutely right. There are at least 10, if not more, specific to IEP students. So in your packet, you'll find a PowerPoint presentation, an example of a local board discipline policy, because really suspensions, expulsions is a consequence of a violation of some kind of policy. And I picked USD 404 just as kind of a random generic kind of thing. It varies local district to local district. Also, one of the issues that we need to keep in mind when discussing suspensions and expulsions is the issue of disproportionality. So I gave you the most recent fact sheet from the Office of Civil Rights. You'll find that in your packet. Generally, to begin a discussion about the statutes relative to suspension and expulsion, 728901 is where you would want to start, and that's essentially a good definition. And then 8902 addresses the idea of hearings and a hearing officer and that kind of stuff. So that'll give you an idea of what districts are looking at when those issues come up. And then I want to give credit to Donna Whitman. The most preeminent expert on school discipline policy in the state of Kansas is Donna Whitman from the Kansas Association of School Boards. And just to give you an idea of how involved that is, this is a copy of their training manual that they provide for district administrators. And I'm going to start it with Peggy, and then you guys can take a look at it at your discretion, and I'll just pick it up after the board meets. But it's very involved, as you can see. Okay, first, the data. And this is an update from the data that I showed you last week relative to the number of bullying incidents in the state of Kansas. Last week, last month, it only seems like last week, when we talked about social-emotional character development and bullying. Here's the report, our current report, and really, as I was talking to Scott before we came down, these data slides are really just a snapshot in time. Just a snapshot in time. When I put in the request, that's what they send me, is what they have at that point. But that gives you an idea of how many buildings are reporting through the Kansas system. Here's in-school suspensions, 2012 to 2016, and you can see that there is a decrease. So I think there's a significant change in the approach that schools are utilizing. And I would like to give credit to social-emotional character development on that, but that might only be part of the solution. Out-of-school suspension. And the next data slide is just, again, a snapshot in time, and we're working to make this more reflective of what schools are doing. But as you can see, it's a very early result of expulsion, and we'll bring that new data back to you the next opportunity that we have. Hey, I mentioned Donna Whitman and the trainings that they do. She calls it making the punishment fit the crime, student discipline options in public schools. I thought that was appropriate since you wanted to talk a little bit about alternatives. I gave you a copy of 728901, and essentially, what it does is it talks about the statutes allow students to be suspended or expelled for certain behaviors, and it spells out those behaviors, okay? Any willful violation, any conduct which substantially disrupts, impedes, or interferes, conduct which endangers safety of others, conduct which infringes or invades the rights of others, commission of a felony, commission of a misdemeanor, or disobedience. And again, that's statute. She also suggests that we keep a couple of things in mind, and particularly the last two bullets there. What she wants administrators to think about is, do students have the opportunity to complete a classroom work receiving education benefit? And when we turn it over to the Restorative Education Center, they'll be able to talk about credit recovery a little bit. And is there a qualified adult to direct and answer questions? And in our study of trauma-informed, we understand that those adults really need to be trained on how better to deal with students with those kind of issues. Okay, here's some definitions. A short-term suspension. Long-term suspension. Expulsion. And the Kansas Association of School Boards suggests clear and appropriate, consistent expectations and consequences. Schools should emphasize positive interventions, and I think our guests will be able to address that. And again, I would point to the last two bullets. Ensure policy limits exclusionary discipline to most severe disciplinary infractions. And again, this is recommendations from the Kansas Association of School Boards. Ensure the policy provides for individualized intensive services and supports. And the Restorative Education Center is going to address that. Okay? Now, yesterday, we talked about pro-social behaviors with the National Schools of Character. And really, all of those activities are protective factors. When you talk about suspensions and expulsions, you're probably talking about those risk factors. And as we move further in our discussion of social-emotional character development, we'll be talking more about protective factors and risk factors. Any questions at this point? There are some of you board members that would have much more experience with suspensions and expulsions than I. Typically, counselors will see it at the post-vention end of it. And there is a bullet that Donna emphasized, and that is the recommendation to districts and schools is be sure you have a reentry plan. When kids come off a suspension, have that reentry plan ready once they walk back into the building.
Can you be a little bit more specific about what a reentry plan is?
Well, first of all, a discussion about what got them into trouble in the first place. Secondly, a discussion of the set of skills that they need to sharpen in order so that it doesn't happen again. So it could be a discussion with the school counselor. Obviously, there's probably going to be a vice principal or whoever is in charge of discipline will be part of that as well. But clear expectations, as Donna says in the PowerPoint. Did that help, Mr. Chair?
That helps. Okay. Yes, Sally Cobble?
Part of that reentry plan, does it also have an academic side?
We would hope so. Most definitely. I mean, that's the mission of schools. And in fact, I'll tell you, if it were my building, when I was in the field, we would approach it just like we would a comprehensive school counseling program. There's a career connection as well, because a lot of times, the skills that they don't master are employability skills, okay? In the social-emotional and in the academic domain.
Carolyn Campbell has a question?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just have a statement on a reentry, because I got to experience that. Because when my child was in middle school, there was this boy on the bus that used the N-word quite a bit to her and picked on her. And one day, she had enough. And so she whooped him good on the bus. And so the reentry plan was, of course, Mama and Papa and Erica, we sat with the principal. And this was at Eisenhower Middle School. Did an excellent job of visiting with Erica and talking to her, and mainly letting her know that, you know, in this case, that she was a good student, and, you know, how you maybe try to resolve a problem. And so I'm hoping that most principals or maybe counselors, but the principal in this case sat down with the three of us, and we had a nice visit.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I might also add, in the development of pro-social behaviors, I think one of the best practices is service learning. And I had, I was blessed to be a part of the Restorative Education Center. Gosh, was it 12 years ago, Gail? 10 years ago that you started it? And at the core of that was the credit recovery and the idea of service learning as well. And they did community service. And that helps develop that skill set that probably the lack of skills got them into trouble. Well, if there are no other questions, I will reintroduce Dr. Martin Stessman, who is the superintendent of USD 450, Gail Cozad, and Dr. Terry Gars from KU.
Good morning. I think my job is to set the table for the folks behind me, and I'll try to do that just with a couple of comments. One is that all of our schools are exploring positive behavior intervention support programs so that we can start working with kids a little further upstream, so that when they get to a point where behavior requires a suspension...
Excuse me. Can you explain what those are?
That would be more supports in elementary school, middle school, and high school that focus more on reinforcing positive behavior, rewarding positive behavior, and incenting positive behavior. Working on changing the culture of the building so that students simply behave better, and reducing behavior incidents. Bullying programs would be one of those. Anti-bullying programs would be one of those, an example of that. Denying a student their constitutional right to free and appropriate public education is a pretty serious undertaking and one that I don't think any school does lightly. And in Shawnee, at Shawnee Heights and Shawnee County, when that happens, we always try to provide services so that kids' education isn't interrupted. One of the programs we use is the Center for Restorative Ed. So if a student is long-term suspended or expelled, they are offered that option of attending the Center for Restorative Ed. Now, that's one of the examples of what happens after they're suspended or expelled. We have a couple of alternative programs for kids prior to suspension or expulsion so that they're designed to interrupt that process, so that if a kid is on a track that we think will end up with suspension or expulsion, we offer them a placement in an alternative program. And one of those, we've modeled after the Center for Restorative Ed, after CRE, and that is an alternative placement, off-campus, small group, computerized instruction, one teacher, one other adult aide, and about 15 kids max. Computerized instructional program, and some service learning as part of that as well. The point I kind of wanted to make, most importantly, is that suspension and expulsions don't happen in isolation, and they don't happen overnight. They happen as a result of conditions that have existed for years in a student's life. And we are seeing more and more kids with mental health issues that we are not equipped to handle in our schools. And those mental health issues end up manifesting themselves in behaviors that get kids suspended or expelled. That would include possession of weapons, possession of drugs, and acts of violence. Those are the three main reasons kids are suspended or expelled. And those generally can be traced back to a mental health condition, or a need for counseling, or a traumatic act that kids past. So again, the three points were the violent acts, drugs, and weapons are generally why kids are suspended or expelled. If a kid is suspended or expelled long-term, suspended long-term or expelled, we provide them with services so that their education continues, and they don't fall behind and end up dropping out. And then a key component of those services at CRE, and what makes that so successful is the mental health services and the service learning they provide. So with that, I stand for questions.
Sally Cobble?
You hit on something that's kind of a problem for me right now. When you have to provide these mental health services for the kids, are you finding, are you finding enough services for them? Or have we been cut to the bone to where you can't find the mental health services?
We can't get enough help to these kids. We've got social workers and counselors who work with them, but we don't have enough social workers, and we don't have enough counselors. When we refer them to external agencies, we find that they're struggling as well.
Okay, so are you saying that it's a problem of finding enough people to cover out there, like the teacher shortage? Or are you saying that there isn't enough people to hire, there isn't enough money to hire the people needed?
Option B.
Thank you. Can I ask another question? And this goes along with, this whole problem of the suspension has me concerned because of Janet, the committee that you were on by Senate bill. What was that? 367. And I know they were releasing some juveniles early. Have you started to see this statewide yet into the schools?
We haven't experienced that directly in our area, no.
Ken, are you hearing?
I haven't heard that yet, but I had a visit with Mr. Dennis yesterday, and I think that progress on that bill is probably on hold right now, and it'll be revisited once the legislature comes back.
And so there won't be any students released until, while that's on hold?
I haven't heard of any yet, but I can try to find out more.
Well, this whole issue around suspension and expulsion, the board has worked on for so many years. But it wasn't until that Senate bill came out that I am really glad that we went into the depth that we did on this bill, especially after Janet was serving on that committee. And Jim Porter, I just want to say thank you for getting us as far as we are on this and wrapping this situation up, because I think it's something that, with the mental health situation in the state of Kansas, and with the possibility of the juvenile justice the way it is, we really need these. And I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and especially this Restoration Education Center, I think, is vital. So thank you very much.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your work on this issue. It's important. I want you to wax philosophically, if you can, just a bit. We're a local control state, and we're proud to say that in virtually any environment. We are a local control state. So in the grand scheme of things, would you want to have more directives from Topeka or fewer? Would you like to have more specificity in the law? Would you like it to be more aspirational? Could you speak to that, please?
Oh, wow. I think we have a lot of good people who get into this business for the right reasons, and that is because they want to help kids. And I think the culture of trying to help all kids graduate and become college and career-ready exists, and that foundation's been laid. And some of the work your commission and you have done in terms of what we want to aspire to, that groundwork's been laid. And I think that vision's been embraced by a lot of people, by the people I come into contact with. And I don't know anybody out there who needs more regulation to help them do their job. And so I guess I would say aspirational works, because we are all aspiring to get everybody college and career-ready, and to get everybody graduated, and to meet their needs with individual plans of study. The socio-emotional piece has been lacking and ignored for a long time, and I think shining a spotlight on that will help. So I don't, that's about as philosophical as I get.
On that same issue, and I can certainly be corrected on this, but my recollection in the field was that the legislature and the board have put forth kind of broad sweeping statements about discipline and suspension and expulsion. It kind of outlined the basics. But it's up to the districts, for instance, to determine sometimes individual cases. So for instance, if they have a zero tolerance on weapons, you know, the state doesn't have a zero tolerance law, I don't think, do they?
Yeah.
On weapons. But we had to come up with our own local policies, you know, and zero tolerance. Jim, you remember, I don't, you know, because, well, anyway, I know that's changing, okay? But one time, if you had a pocket knife or a bazooka, you were, you know, gone, 180 days, no questions asked. You know, and today, we're a little bit better about that. We take into account, you know, the age better, because we had in the news about a kindergartner who brought a kitchen knife, you know, and had it go. Those were local. So a lot of local have changed. They had to come up with, the law said you had to come up with policies, you know, that clearly delineated, but they didn't say what you had to do.
Right.
Okay? So we're backing off from some of those things. And that's where a lot of the confusion on suspension expulsion is, because school boards came out, like in Wichita, I remember clearly in the '90s, you know, pocket knife or bazooka, they're gone. And now we're modifying those, because we've seen, there are extenuating circumstances. But at the time, it seemed appropriate, you know? So in a lot of ways, Steve, your question, local communities have established more severe guidelines many times than the state prescribed. Okay? You know, and went further in this, you know, for reasons that were important to them. You know, and that's why we get some inconsistency when we hear complaints from parents and others, "Well, this district didn't do this, but this district did." Well, that's a local control issue. Yeah. So, and we don't want to change that. So we have to be careful about, you know, mandating, you know, this and that, as we do in the judicial system. But even there, there's some flexibility, you know? But the parallel would be, the courts are sometimes hand-strung because the legislatures in those states have in fact said, "You will be, if you do X, you get Y." You know, the courts don't have any flexibility. So we have actually, Steve, and I think Randy can say... So, we have actually, Steve, and, and I think Randy can say, some, we have flexibility at the local level on how we structure and how we apply, you know, the standards of expectations from the legislators, discipline and, or suspension and expulsion rules and regulations.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. I don't want to say that the legislature is saying, "You've got to suspend this kid for, you know, eight hundred and eighty days, or you have to do this for four days or two days," you know? Districts own a lot of their own suspension and expulsion rules.
Agreed.
Is what I'm saying.
Most of them would be modeled after the KASB.
Correct. And that association has, has given them guidelines that fit the legislation and, and case law, so to protect them, the districts, more than to provide helpful interventions, you know? Because sometimes my hands as a principal were tied, sometimes they weren't.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify that locally, we have a lot to say.
Sure. And again, locally, application of those policies can, can differ from.
How they conduct hearings, you know, things. But the timeline, and notices, and those things are, are, are not debatable.
Right, very prescribed.
Yes.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've said this, but I want to kind of clarify, because I've kind of been out of the field for five-plus years. But, you know, unfortunately, we've always had suspensions and expulsions for various things with children. I mean, Carolyn, you gave an example of, you know, that, and certainly has, I've dealt with that too, or, you know, kids that get in situations where they've had to be suspended or hopefully not expelled, but sometimes, occasionally, that does happen over the years. But then, you really brought up the mental health issues. And it seems to me, most of my conversations I've had with school folks in the last four to five years, that has really been a major increase, as you alluded to. So, I'm, I'm assuming, assuming that you're seeing that also. And then, just not the level of support that we really need to help, because we've got teachers that are trained to teach. We've got teachers that are not necessarily trained how to deal with mental health issues with their children. And then that creates, as you said, it manifests itself into discipline issues, which then become difficult. So, I'm guessing that you've kind of seen this continuum over a time where it's, it's really changed.
Let me connect some dots, because what we have is a bit of a perfect storm. And that is, we have had stagnant resources financially for the last five or six years. And so, you, you try to protect the core service of the classroom, which is your mission. At the same time, we are seeing more and more kids with more and more problems. Well, I've been doing this a while, and, and I, I don't recall ever seeing a five-year-old with behaviors that could destroy a classroom in a matter of minutes, and we would have to clear the room. And, and we have those kids now. I've never seen teenage boys curled up in the fetal position in the middle of a high school office sobbing, and we have that now. We have, we have more kids with severe needs and diminishing resources to meet them at the same time. And, and so, we're all struggling with those. And then, when I talk with my peers across the state, it doesn't matter if you're in Riverton, or Shawnee County, or Stanton County, we're all seeing some of the same issues.
And I think that's something that folks need to understand. And it isn't a Kansas issue, although I think our lack of resources has accentuated the problem here, is what, again, I continue to hear when I talk to folks. And so, you, you hear this, again, from every area of the state.
And at every level.
Yeah.
You know, kindergarten, preschool, high school.
So, then the need for some support is really critical.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'll be interested to hear your, your, the other folks, and, you know, what they have to say about their, their program, because obviously, there's support needed in the state as we work with our children.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm probably echoing everything that's been said, probably, but I'm rather passionate about this, because I am on this committee, on this Senate Bill, and I recognize the challenges, you know, that will, that are going to happen, and that you are currently have. I guess what, I mean, bottom line, it's money. I mean, you know, I mean, let's, let's just be real. I think this emphasizes to us the importance of us working directly with the legislature to make sure that some things are, some things are added to help our schools with these type of pro- challenges. But what I'd like to ask, I guess, is, is if you or any other districts could help us, what we can do to help you, you know, with this issue? Because I recognize trauma is huge today in these kids coming to school. They're not getting it at school, they're getting it in their own private lives. And things are happening. I remember when, years ago, when we used to suspend everybody, and the kids were silent, that's when we came up with in-school suspension, because that was sure better, because some of them liked to be suspended for a couple of days, you know? But it's a different animal today, you know? And the children have different challenges. So, if we can help in any way, I think that we would really appreciate it. Because to me, this, this thing, I don't know if it's because we don't have the money to provide the services, or if we just have that many more today. But I think we need to know, and we need to be able to present the case to the legislature. So, anyway, you could help us, I would appreciate.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Great conversation. We're moving and heading in the right direction. Kent, our next speaker is?
That would be Gail Cozad from Kansas Children's Service League. And let me pull up their PowerPoint. And I apologize, I think I had Restorative Education Center, and actually, it's a Center for Restorative Education.
That's quite all right.
Which has a little bit of ring to it.
All right. While he's doing that, I will just introduce myself. I'm Gail Cozad with Kansas Children's Service League. We are a statewide nonprofit. We are the Kansas chapter for Prevent Child Abuse America. We are involved in a lot of different efforts across the state, and I have had the privilege over the last, over ten years to work with the Center for Restorative Education in a variety of formats, whether that was in my previous job or within my current role at KCSL. And so, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that today, but know that I have a lot of, I wear a different, a lot of different hats at different times. So, the Center for Restorative Education, there we go. It was developed in two thousand and three. It was really a response here in Shawnee County about a need, honestly, to just get kids off of the street as kind of a result to the zero tolerance that you were talking about. In Shawnee County, I think we have seen the zero tolerance policies start to look very different, especially over the last two years. But initially, children were getting suspended, and they didn't have anywhere to go. And so, we, as a community partner, went to the school districts at the time and said, "We have a small amount of money. We got this great little grant, and could we just get these kids off of the streets and have them do some community service?" We started out with USD 501, Topeka Public Schools, Shawnee Heights, Seaman, and Auburn-Washburn. So, we served the four school districts here in Shawnee County at that time. We had capacity for ten students, that wasn't very many. And what we quickly learned in that first year is that while doing some community service and volunteer work with them was wonderful, but the reality was, they were still falling very behind in school. And they were, when they were returning to school, it was not always going very well for them. So, over the last thirteen years, we have really progressed it to what it is today. And our principal goals within the Center for Restorative Education are to promote and increase school attendance, their academic progress, their social-emotional well-being, and improve graduation rates. Our target population is youth in grades six through twelve, so we do serve middle school as well as high school students. They, as Dr. Stessman indicated, many of them have come from traumatic experiences. Many of them are at risk of out-of-home placement, incarceration. Some of them go into the detention center and then come back out of the detention center, and we are working with that transition. And many of them are at risk of dropping out of school. They come to us as a freshman repeat, or a freshman repeat two years, and so, many of them are already very far behind. Just an example, I could tell you multiple stories, but we had a young girl two years ago who was with us, and I think the difference that you would see in our program versus what schools have the capacity to do currently, is this was a young girl who, her mother was living with a man who was very gang-affiliated. In the home, on a regular basis, were drug deals. There were a lot of violent acts occurring. She would come to our program terrified, scared, crying on most mornings, with no capacity to sit in a classroom and try to learn. She was fourteen years old, and what she did when she returned home from our program was she said that every night she locked herself in her bedroom, because it was the only place that she could be safe from her mother's boyfriend. These are the types of situations that where our children are going through, that the ability for them to manage in a classroom is going to be very difficult for them. And so, what you see is them acting out, and because many of them have seen a lot of violence in their own home, are also acting out very violently. We were able to help this girl and this mother get away from their boyfriend and have their own life. As a matter of fact, we were actually, worked with the mother to have this young girl go with her aunt to live in another state. We've stayed in contact with this young girl, and I will tell you that she is actually doing very well now. Not necessarily a success for Kansas in the sense of our graduation rates, but a great success for this, this girl. So, that's just one story, I can tell you many. I will tell you that our program components are credit recovery, our social skills, and case management. The whole program uses a restorative justice model. It is based out of the International Organization for Restorative Practices. The key difference with our program, I, I know that you were talking a little bit about Senate Bill three sixty-seven, and, and the kids that are incarcerated coming back into the school systems. I will tell you that the model that we use is based off of a model that works with kids who are coming out of a correctional facility and working with them on restorative justice. So, restorative justice, for those of you that are not as familiar with that, is really about talking with youth about the consequences of their actions, not only to themselves, but to the people around them, and helping them rebuild and understand how those actions have consequences, and what those further kind of ripple consequences may be. And then, as a result, talking with them about what can they do differently when they encounter a similar situation. So, every interaction with our students at the Center for Restorative Education is around teaching them how to manage their behavior, teaching them to try to think before they react to another student in the classroom, a teacher who is telling them to do their assignment, and they may not want to do that particular assignment at that specific time. And so, every interaction is, is based around that. Our classrooms, we have two. They each have eighteen students in them. We have a certified teacher in each classroom. In each classroom, we also have essentially a para. So, we have a ratio of one to nine. It is very small because of that expectation for those regular interactions with the students around their behaviors, and helping them think before they react, or when they've reacted, to help them step back and kind of process what happened with that. So, you can see that that, that is interwoven in every day. So, from the very beginning, one of the things that we do from a restorative practice standpoint is, it's about taking accountability. So, one of the things that we ask the students to do when they come in that morning, is we talk with them about, "Okay, these are the classes that you're working on today. What is, what is your accountability? What do you plan to get done today?" And then, our teachers then check in with them about what they're getting done. As you can imagine, serving sixth through twelfth grade, we do not have the capacity to do regular classroom teacher, teaching. So, we do have online curriculum. It is accentuated with the teachers who also do homework assignments. The students have homework plans, they have essays they have to write, you know, especially for social studies and English and all of those things. The other piece that you should know about our credit recovery is that it's intended to obviously pick up their core classes, so you talk about English, science, math, social studies. But in addition to that, we've worked with the school districts to take our social skills and turn them into electives. So, art therapy is art class, and students will participate in that, because one, they get it, they get credit for it, and two, although some of them are really smart, and they say, "We really talk a lot about our feelings in these classes." But, but it is around art. We don't call it art therapy, we, we call it art class. The other one is a consumer class, which really is about those, many of the students that come to us are not going to be college-bound, they are, are going to be career-bound, and so we are talking with them about those consumer things. How do you do a budget? How do you do an interview? How do you fill out an application? Those very practical skills that they are going to need. And then, the other one that we have is PE, but I will tell you that it is essentially, if any of you have done or heard of a ropes class, it is a physical class where they have to learn how to communicate, how to problem-solve together, and how to build those social skills. So, they really enjoy that, but as I said, it is a very intentional purpose. The other piece that we have that Dr. Stessman talked about is we have case management. So, we have social workers that meet with our students probably on a weekly basis, sometimes on a daily basis. During the first two weeks, we do a very extensive overview of what are their needs, what are their concerns. We're looking at the reason that they came to our program, so why were they suspended? Why were they expelled? Was it drug use? And if it was drug use or drug possession, what's causing that? What's going on that you have decided that you need to, you know, be trying to sell drugs, or have drugs in your possession, or utilizing drugs? If it is around fighting or, or violent acts, we talk about looking at anger and assessing where, where that is coming from. So, the, the assessment is very extensive. It looks at mental illness, it looks at, and in mental illness, there's substance abuse and depression and suicidal ideation, and there's also the things around what's going on in your family, and have you experienced trauma in your past, and what was that trauma? And when was that trauma? And did it occur in, in October? And, oh, that's when you got suspended. So, let's talk about, there's an anniversary date every year, and how do we help you understand that and go, "October was when my mom died, and that's going to be a difficult month, month for me." So, all of that is going on. Our students are typically with us about twenty-two weeks, on average. They come in and out of the program during the semesters, depending on when their suspension or expulsion occurred. We have worked with all of the school districts here in Shawnee County, so that they transition back to their school district at a natural time. So, if their suspension ends in, on December first, many of our school districts will say, will let them, we will allow that student to stay there until January one, natural transition for the next semester. On the flip side, if their suspension ends January fourteenth, our school districts will bring them back on a contract on January, at the beginning of January. In other words, they have to continue to behave in an appropriate manner in order for them to stay at the school and not have to come back to the Center for Restorative Education. That has worked really well. We know that, over the years, we tried transitioning kids at the time that their suspension or expulsion ended, which may have been in the middle of a semester. That didn't always work very well. Kids have a really difficult time with that. The other piece that we do with our case managers and our social workers is that we do transition planning. So, it is a formal meeting with the school district where the student is from, with that school principal, with the school counselor, the school. that school principal, with the school counselor, the school social worker. And we ask the student for who is their support person in that school? And we make sure that that person is invited to that transition meeting because it's not just about where they are academically, but it's also about what worked while they were in our program, what was able to help them maintain themselves, to not get out of control and try to put as many of those things in place within that school district. And sometimes that's just them recognizing when they might be escalating and having a safety person to be able to go to. But school districts aren't necessarily going to know that unless somebody's able to talk with them about that. So we do that transition planning. And then we follow the students for a minimum of a minimum of two months, but can be up to six months after they leave our program to make sure that they are staying connected to those community resources that we're able to get them connected to, whether that is outpatient drug and alcohol treatment, whether that is mental health counseling. Those are probably our two largest referrals that we send our students to in the community to try and help them maintain their their behaviors. I know that I'm probably a little bit
Oh, it was great.
But, okay.
Just for clarification, you are are not, are you directly a part of 501 or any of the districts or are you a nonprofit that that provides services and do they pay you for these services?
We are a nonprofit. We are, we contract with the school districts. They pay as a fee for the services and then we do fundraise for the other portion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Deana Horst?
Well, actually, that was part of my question was, how are you funded? But I think I've got my answer from that component. But listening to previous speakers and and yourself, it seems to me that we need to be thinking about how we get across to those who fund education, that there are needs for students beyond the classroom. And if we don't fund those, we're going to have greater issues down the road. And the earlier we deal with it, the better. And we have a push to put more money into the classroom, which is a great idea, but we've excluded all of those folks who are the support of those classroom teachers and of those students. So I think we as a body perhaps have a a challenge also to, as Janet kind of alluded to earlier, to work with the folks across the street to help them understand the need. And of course, having having those who work directly with students help would greatly enhance that
Sure.
that message.
Yes. And I and I would say that you can't avoid the social emotional. And if you if you do, you're not going to increase graduation rates or on grade achievement for many students because they don't have the capacity to to function in a classroom and learn.
Right. So thank you for all that you've brought to us and the things you're doing for students.
Well, we have loved our partnership with the Shawnee County School Districts. It has been very beneficial on both sides.
Hopefully it can be expanded.
Yes, we hope so too at some point.
In other, there are other areas of the state that also need this same same opportunity for kids. So, thank you.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you are a chapter of the Kansas Children's Service League? Is that kind of how you?
No, we are a statewide nonprofit agency, 501(c)(3), but we are the Kansas Chapter for Prevent Child Abuse America.
Okay.
So in our role is that we have a lot of access to information around prevention of child abuse, what's the most effective, as well as I believe that you guys have learned information about the adverse childhood experiences study and what that means for students and adults and all of that. So we are, in our role as the chapter, we have a lot of work in that as well.
So, but there are other offices of?
For Kansas Children's Service League?
Around the state.
Yes, we have an office in Kansas City, Wichita, Emporia, Pittsburgh, Hutch, Garden City, Liberal. I'm missing a few, sorry.
Is, in your opinion, is this type of a program able to be replicated?
Well, that's an interesting question. We did do, we just finished a four-year study with KU, which is why Dr. Garska is with me. If you have any questions about that, I know we're running short on time, but. And the intention of the evaluation was the first two years to determine, were we doing what we said we were going to do? Were we achieving the outcomes that we said we would? And then the second two years was really to look at our program compared to a similar program and see if we were achieving similar results or better. And I will tell you that the outcome of that was that we were achieving better results. So our next step is we we would be interested in looking at the ability to replicate. We just don't know in this environment if we have the capacity to do that.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. It's very interesting. So I'm assuming we're maybe going to hear about the study next.
Well, I I thought that we were going till 10:20, but I'm more than
Yeah, that's what we thought too.
So we're more than welcome to keep presenting, but we understand, we don't want to
Let's go with some questions that we have from board members right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you. You answered my question. I wanted to know how many of these centers are around the state? And evidently, there's one.
That is correct.
Because I would love some in my part of the world.
There is one. I will tell you that there is a similar program out of Wichita School Districts, although they don't have the level of case management that our program does. And there's a similar program out of Olathe School District as well.
That's not one.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just, I wanted to let you know that there are, there are some similar programs. Yes.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My kudos to you, the thank you, thank you. This is, I'm very, very impressed. I just have a very simple question. Are you able to accept every child that's referred or do you have a waiting list?
I will tell you that for Shawnee Heights, Washburn Rural, we are usually able to accept every child. 501 typically has a waiting list, although I will say that waiting list is getting lower because they are changing some of their policies around the zero tolerance. So it's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. My, I have two questions and one of those is two, two classes per day or how many hours are the?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
And then their transportation, is that provided by the school district?
It is not provided by the school district. The students and the parents are required to get their students there on their own. So it does require some effort on the parent's part, but we, even with that, we have about an 89% attendance rate. So that's good. The other thing is, is that it does go from 7:30 till 2:30. So students arrive around 7:30 a.m. and we are in class until 2:30 p.m.
I would share with the board that this is a great program, you know, and driven by people who have mission and purpose in mind and you do a great job. And many times, it's individuals such as yourself who come with these programs. And so often, you're the reason it's succeeding, you and the and the folks that are running the program. As it takes a special kind of person and special kind of training.
Well, and I I won't take all the credit. Mariah Neely is our program supervisor and she's with students this today. It's it's getting to be the end of the semester and so they're working on transition meetings and going back to to their home schools. So she could not be here today, but.
You know, going back 25 years ago, we suspend them, kick them out. When you come back, you know, if you don't behave, we'll kick you out again.
Right.
Today, we understand that we're looking for the success of each student. So we have to look beyond that. And I'm sorry, I don't remember superintendent's name, but you know.
Dr. Stesman?
Right. It's the things, it's culture you build in your school, but it's also the culture you build that extends beyond your school to these kinds of programs and to the school districts that are part of your program. Congratulations to them for taking on that because many school districts have done similar programs, but one of the first things that happens when the budget is is reduced is these are the programs that go most quickly.
We hold our
They're easy to, they're easy to get rid of.
We hold our breath every year, but I will say that the superintendents have been amazing in Shawnee County in recognizing and I, and that was another reason why we did the evaluation. I know we're almost done, but I will say one thing. As we looked at this, what we looked at, one of our things was graduation rates and our understanding from the Kansas Department of Education is that students who are suspended or expelled long-term have a 32% graduation rate. Our kids, Terry, remind me, was it 88? 83, 83%.
Yeah, that's exactly right because we know that students who are suspended for multiple days, their their chances of graduation just went down significantly, you know, regardless of how smart they are or whatever, you know. So yes, and then many of the students have, regrettably, once you're suspended, the likelihood of you being suspended again increases dramatically, you know, and and it's a spiral down. So to stop that spiral, take special efforts, special programs that are not oftentimes looked at as part of the classroom.
Right.
You know, and that's the philosophy that has to change with those that hold the purse. You know, that these are very inexpensive programs when you come right down to it, to the cost ratio of keeping kids in school and graduating them so they have a future. Because we also know that kids that are suspended have a much more high likelihood of being incarcerated.
Right.
You know, so.
Or underemployed or unemployed.
Well, yes, but incarcerated is way expensive.
Way, way more expensive, but all of those things.
Yeah, all of those, all those negative things, you know. And in schools, it it takes certain leaders to take the broad shoulders of of going past, you know, just an easy discipline solution of how many kids did you suspend? How many notches in your gun? And and sometimes that causes some problems back at the school because people, you know, you did this, so you should be out. You should be no chance, you know? And that's what the system I grew up under. Today, we know that that's a failed system. We can't do that. But it does cause problems because sometimes the people who who come to us the quickest in the voice have resources. They didn't know their their child has been, quote, good, never been part of this net, you know? But now all of a sudden, something happens like Carolyn's situation, you know, good support systems and all, and they get involved and all of a sudden, they're in a system that they're not used to.
Sure.
And they don't understand it because, you know, and and that's the voice sometimes we hear, you know? And 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 all of a sudden, the system seems unfair.
Well, and those same consequences can happen for those kids.
Sure.
And so, you know, we work with Topeka Public Schools, which looks very different than Shawnee Heights and very different than Auburn-Washburn. And the students that come from those schools look very different as well and they come for different reasons. And so we are working through all that, but you are right. The parents that have the means and the capacity are the ones that often are the loudest, but also often the ones that often are the most confused by the system because they don't understand that.
Yes. And we need to do a better job as 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 school folks in explaining these systems, you know, to folks.
Sure.
Because, you know, like bullying, you know, very confusing for some people, you know, because they they look at their high school experience or school experience and they they rate it from there. And that's why, regrettably, we have these because there's other programs too in terms of the restorative justice umbrella, you know, where, you know, if a kid's in conflict and you suspend them and you really haven't resolved the conflict, that problem's going to be continued and could continue out of school, but a lot of times in school. And and threat assessments, how to deal with those, how to how to help people in their transition when they come back from your program or from not a program.
Well, and programs like our program have to take into account that sometimes that conflict travels with those students.
Oh, right.
So we've had referrals where
Sure.
the two students who were in a fight got suspended and both sent to our program and we had to
Good luck.
deal with that conflict there.
Hello.
It just, it just went with them, yeah.
And they're happy to send it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but the thing is, these are not soft programs. These are real hard programs and it takes dollars to do it.
It does take dollars.
And you shouldn't have to live in a, in a, in a world of uncertainty about whether you'll be functional next year. We need to make sure that we get the message to those, whether they're those that are in that situation or first timers or wherever, but we're helping kids make it through the gauntlet of 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 school, you know? And there are so many different ways that we can help them. There's, and and I can't imagine a school today or a district today that isn't thinking about this issue and and trying to figure out how to meet those needs, you know? And sometimes, board members or people in the community, it's like, well, if you broke the rules, that's tough and we got to get past that. We got to get past to the, to the restorative and to the civil responsibilities we have, you know, in helping students. Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you, sir. I think we have another presenter.
You had mentioned that they were going to talk about the
We have another presenter. Is she not going to present?
I, we want to be considerate of your time, so.
Is she, was she planning to present?
Dr. Garska was planning to present on the evaluation. You'd like to hear from her.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Someone else.
I will keep it short and sweet. How about that? Yeah, all right.
Randy does have to catch a plane at 3 o'clock though.
Okay, all right. He's heard this though. He's heard this. So I'm Terry Garska from University of Kansas Center for Public Partnerships and Research. We've been evaluating the CRE program for four years. Here's a, a, a look at the kinds of kids that have gone through the program, 220 in that time, typically male, about 15 years of age, 17% have IEPs, 72% are free and reduced lunch status, 18% are Hispanic. When you talk about disproportionality, what we're seeing compared to the students that are in CRE compared to the rest of Kansas, you can see where that breaks down in terms of race. I'm going to present a couple of findings around where students are coming from when they come into the the semester before they come into CRE. Typically, their grade point average is 1.5, a D+. We had an alternative education program that we compared it to. Typically, their students who were suspended were coming in at a C+. When they left, the GPA they earned during the program increased to 3.19. Of course, you know, she talked about the the curriculum that they use, but certainly they're making progress, they're earning their credits and their grades. They earn typically 3.7 credits during the program, so it's keeping them from falling behind. These are kids who have the ability to learn in the right environment. That was our conclusion. Graduation rates. So this is really the big thing that has driven a lot of our evaluation because we know that graduating has long-term implications. So for the the students who were eligible to graduate in CRE, and again, typically most of them are in the program only for 22 weeks. That's 70, 75% of them are in the program for a relatively short period of time, but such that when you look at their graduation rates, 83% compared to those who don't have a CRE program experience. So these are folks, kids who have not had any kind of intervention. So I mean, that's, that's significant in my mind. We talked a little bit about, and I should also say, we did measure their socio-emotional gains while they're in the program. We saw some increases particularly with boys on some of the socio-emotional skills, interpersonal relationships, affective strength. So these boys are talking about their feelings a little bit more in the, in the, in the program, so we're seeing some gains there. Not as many for girls, but. The return on investment. So we did a cost analysis as part of this program. We wanted to look at how much extra it costs to serve these students. And of, and of course, the graduation rate influences that. So you've got a base rate So, you've got a base rate of how much a student would receive in public school versus how much it costs for a student in CRE program. That graduation rate is really what drives sort of the lifetime benefit to, to society. So, for every dollar that was invested in CRE, we're, we're looking at a potential for $8 in return. So, if you had 100 youth who went through CRE, the benefit to society is 15 million compared to 100 youth that had no other intervention. And again, this is driven by the lifetime earning potential and some of the incarceration rates, et cetera, et cetera. So, our conclusion, and it, and honestly, we, coming in as a objective evaluator, I was, I was doubtful that, well, I wasn't doubtful, I was objective about whether this program would actually work, whether we would see the kind of long-term benefits that we're seeing in this program. It was, it was eye-opening, and certainly to look at the cost pieces is how some folks look at it, but also just the socio-emotional growth, being able to graduate, just that short amount of time in CRE helped propel them forward. And a lot of the qualitative interviews we do with students, it was a reset for them. When they went to CRE, it was a chance to start over, start new, a reset, and they took that advantage and continued on. So, short and sweet.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your work with this program. You know, it, it's obviously a great program, and I, I'm, the only thing holding us all back from this is, is funding, you know.
Yes.
Sally Cobble?
Okay, one last question, and I don't care which one of you answer. I didn't, is there much parent involvement, intentional parent involvement? And you might have covered that, but somehow I missed it.
No, actually, it's a question that we get quite frequently. So, with our case managers, our social workers, there is intentional involvement. We are contacting the parents on at least a weekly basis, sometimes a daily basis, and really, that's around, how did your student do? What were the things your student did well while they were here? We really try to take it from a positive standpoint, because so many of them have also had negative, or negative things that have happened, experiences, thank you, with their own education. So, we try to approach that differently. They also are required to attend the enrollment, and we have a service plan that we do with them present to talk about the services that their student is gonna be enrolled in, but also how they may need to be involved in services as well, and we will get them connected with those in the community, and then they have to be involved in the transition meeting that when, when they go back to the school district. So, it is intentional.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you, and this is, I wanted to ask the doctor. Your slide, you, you were being respectful to us, and you went fast, and I'm slow. The racial component is, is it?
So, the, the red is white, the gray is black. And we have biracial is the next category, Native American, Asian, and other.
Okay, okay.
So, the disproportionality is around black students coming into the program more so than the rest of the population of. Minorities in general. Kansas.
Okay, okay, well, thank you so much. Wait, 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 oh, I don't see Hispanic, Latino, where are they?
Ethnicity, 18% were of Hispanic ethnicity.
Okay, okay, but I didn't see it on that other chart, that's.
Right. This is ethnicity, and this, this is race, and we've separated them out.
So, where are they there?
They would be, they could be black of Hispanic race, they could be, we have separated the categories out.
Why?
Um, 'cause Hispanic could be black or white or any other race.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy's over here saying that's the feds. Yeah, the feds have changed that, so we were being consistent with that.
Okay, so this is a federal, but, but, so, but why can't we in Kansas identify so we know how many children there are that are, that we're working with?
So, we've, they have served 220 students.
Okay.
And of that 220, almost 20% were Hispanic ethnicity. That could be white, that could be.
Okay, 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 so then why are they not on that chart?
They are, they're just in, so they, so, for example, a.
Okay.
Hispanic child will identify themselves as I'm Caucasian or I'm, I'm African-American.
Okay, I, I know, 'cause I worked in the Secretary of State's office once, so I understand what you're saying, you know, when you're putting it that way, that, but I still have a problem with.
Oh, yes.
Me looking at this and not seeing those, you have them on that thing that's saying 18%, but they're not listed shown here for me to.
They're, they're across each of those categories. We haven't broken it down by that, but it would be possible to do so.
Why can't you do that, though?
We would, we just.
For that chart, so, just, okay, thank you.
Terry, if you'll do that, I can make sure Carolyn gets.
Sure.
Just have a.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
But I understand, I understand it won't be accurate, so, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the good work you do. Thank you for providing the data, and Carolyn, thank you for reminding us to be nice.
Well, I.
Compassionate and firm.
Thank you very much for letting us come.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, very good. We'll take a short break. I'd say five till, but it'll never happen, so we'll, we'll go to 11. We'll start, we'll restart at 11:00. Can you be sergeant-at-arms and tell our, our friends that we are?
He must be one of the new Chinese sergeants.
He's been good at it. It is, in fact, 11:00? Kathleen, church, off the podium. We have a quorum in the room now, thank you very much. Jay Scott is here to bring us an update on individual plans of study implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks to the board for your attention this morning. I was telling Scott Smith earlier that I went over my time last time, so that means this time I've gotta cut it back, kinda like the Seinfeld episode where everything evens out. We're gonna go take that route. So, the purpose of our comments this morning is an update on individual plans of study, one of the five outcomes that the board has set. And so, we, we're gonna focus our, our comments today on the results of a recently completed implementation survey that we sent out across the state. I've got my partner in crime, Kathleen Mercer, she's our career pathways coordinator with KSDE and the Kansas Board of Regents, so we're gonna tag team on this today. The title of our title slide, Helping Students Know More Before They Go. It's not specifically that they need to know, know what they wanna do before they go, it's know a little bit more than they have before. One of my favorite movies is October Sky. I love that movie, true story, science, history, all on one movie, and it's about Homer Hickam. Homer Hickam was a high school student in Coalwood, West Virginia, where the coal mines ruled, I mean, it was everything about the coal mine. And he wanted to go to space. This was back in the 50s, when that really wasn't something that kids thought about a lot, but he wanted to go to space, and one of the scenes of the movie, the principal was basically outlining the students' post-secondary options if they went to Coalwood High School. And it came down to, if you're good enough, if you're lucky enough to get a football scholarship, you can go to college, or you're going to the mines. Those were the post-secondary options for the, for the students back then, and I wonder about Homer Hickam, if he had an individual plan of study, but he didn't need one. He followed his passion, he did a lot of the work on his own. If you haven't seen the movie, I don't wanna ruin it too much, but Homer and the Rocket Boys build these rockets, and they go to the National Science Fair, they win it, and they all go to college. And Homer actually does end up getting into space as an astronaut. So, he realized his dream. Fast forward to today, where students have multiple post-secondary options now, multiple in front of them. But my, the question is, are, are students and our families, are they aware of all those post-secondary paths that lay before them, that lead them to the middle class and the careers that they're interested in? And so, I think, and do they have the opportunity to identify passions and career interest areas? With an individual plan of study, that, that is a tool and a process that allows students to research those multiple post-secondary options. Yes, we need students to go to college for your university, but we also need students to go down the other paths that are available to them. An individual plan of study allows students the time and the space to identify career interest areas and then pick that educational path that works for them. With that, so let's, let's start back with individual plan of study. What is it? It's both an actual product that the student actually develops, and it's a process that the school implements to help the student develop that individual plan of study. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kathleen, and she's gonna take you through your interview and the results.
So, let's look at the year in review. So, the first thing we did was we identified the IPS components, and then we released an RFP last year for the state preferred vendor. And then we did a statewide tour, if you'll remember, introducing the RFP and the IPS to all the practitioners in the state. In the summer, we identified the state preferred vendor, we offered professional development, and we opened up the signup for the reimbursement process for going onboard with preferred vendor. This fall, we have had that preferred vendor come out, and they did a tour of the state of Kansas, providing professional development for our practitioners across the state, and we have also done some non-technical professional development regarding implementation. So, while we have a system that they can use, they need training on how that system works. They have to have a system in their school that is not a technical system. It's a system around how they're going to actually implement all of these pieces. So, where are we now? IPS Implementation Survey was sent out to all school districts. The intention of this survey was to get a baseline for our data regarding where we are implementation-wise. It went to superintendents, principals, counselors, career advocates, and curriculum directors. So, all of those have responded. 267 school districts or systems responded to the survey, so we had a really good response So, one of the questions we wanted to cover today was.
Excuse me. When you say districts, did that go to districts, only public school districts, or did we also go with accredited schools?
It went to all, all our listservs. So, if you're a, if you're a private school curriculum director and you're on our curriculum director listserv, it went to those.
Okay, yeah, that, thank you.
We did get some feedback from some private schools, just a few. So, one of the questions was, how long has the individual plan of study been implemented at your district? So, looking at this data, we can see that a majority of the state has either not started or less than one year. That would be the gold and the red, right? So, as we're looking through this data, we wanna keep in mind, these people are just starting this process. We do have 22.4% that have more than two years and 21.6% who haven't even started yet. We had people who wanted to sit back and see exactly what was gonna happen before they jumped in, and, and we knew that going into this from our conversations across the state. We wanted to know, in which grades do the students begin their IPS? And it looks like, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth. We were glad to see that they weren't starting their senior year necessarily, but we believe that they were starting in the ninth grade. I think a lot of schools that start in the ninth grade were trying to find a place to start, right? So, if I'm starting an individual plan of study and I start with my freshman, I can work backwards or I can work forwards from that position. So, what is the implementation model of the district's individual plan of study program? So, we've identified some different models. One is a counselor-centered model, that's probably what is most familiar to everyone. The counselor delivers all of the curriculum and does all of the individual plan of study work with the students and the families. A career advisor system would be where all of the staff members are somehow involved. You may have the counselor leading that to a certain extent, but most of the work is done through the teachers and the staff members in the building. Career advocate system is where you're going to have people who are specifically hired in just to work on individual plan of studies. And then the hybrid is where you have a counselor and you have teachers who are working, and the counselor is leading the teachers through the process, and they're dividing across the entire school where the tasks are going to take place. So, for example, if you're going to do interest inventories, that school may decide that can be done during seminar, or they may decide that the best place to do that is with the counselor. That's up to the school to decide, but if they chose to do the interest inventories in the seminar period, and then they move into researching what schools they wanna go to based on the interest inventory they completed, right? They may do that in their career and community connections course that they're taking. They may do that with the media specialist. They may do that in seminar, or they may do that with the counselor. So, a hybrid allows you to take the different tasks that you're looking at and divide them up in the school according to where you can kind of get the most bang for your buck. If you're doing one-on-one advising, you probably need to do that with just the counselor. Do you need to do an interest inventory one-on-one with a counselor? Not necessarily. So, what we've seen in, what we've heard from the people who have been doing this is they tend to start off with the counselor-centered, and then as they add career advisors to the system, they turn into a hybrid, trying to get everyone in the system onboard with implementation. Jay's gonna cover the implementation activities that have occurred.
So, this survey question was of high interest to the group, and this was, this survey was developed by an internal work group that we've got, we call it the IPS Brain Trust, so we're just here to, to represent that group today. But the implementation.
Don't give them flattery on yourselves, but.
I'm never invited to the meetings, if that means anything. Which implementation activities have occurred? And you can see that developing timeline. So, we're asking students to plan with an individual plan of study. That takes the, the school time to plan. So, you can see that schools are spending time developing their timeline of how to implement this with fidelity, make sure it's a good system that's set up, because the schools see the value in this. Career interest inventories are identified. That's, that's another high bar in this, or high level response, a number of responses to this question, career interest inventories that are identified. So, they've, schools are taking time to look at, okay, are we gonna use Career Cruising's career interest inventories? Are we gonna use ONET? Are we gonna use ASVAB? There are a myriad of choices of career interest inventories out there on the open market, so schools are taking the time to pick the one that works for them. Just a couple, one other highlight is training staff, spending time training their staff. Their counselors are being trained, and maybe they're coming back and training the staff, or they're sending a, a large group out to be trained and doing some in-service as well. This was, is the last survey question, I think, that we're gonna cover, but, and we breezed through this earlier one, but you have the slide that, that says 2016 Implementation Survey. You can look at the entire survey if you'd like. There were 17 questions, we just pulled out the ones we thought were most pertinent to the conversation today. How often will review and update of the IPS and goals for each student be scheduled? We were a little concerned with the response, responses to this one, in that annually was the most often choice for schools, but we think that, as you dive deeper into that, as to why they would pick annual, well, many schools are just getting started up in this, so maybe they haven't really, you know, maybe they're starting with once a year, but we, we have from the beginning promoted that at least twice a year, students should be really looking at their individual plan of study, updating it. You know, when you're talking about setting goals, that's an important and a big step in individual plan of study. There are a lot of other things that students are gonna be doing in their individual plans of study, but. plans of study besides setting goals, and that will take place throughout the year. I've talked to several schools that they're working, their students are working in their individual plan of study multiple times in one week. So, this is just about setting goals and doing those things. And, and we know, I think, as we get more into it, we'll see the, the, the at least semester, each semester and above, being the, the choice for schools. Okay, so, the goals for IPS implementation. The first goal is that all of our middle and high schools will have a product and a process that they're comfortable with in place by next school year. And we're well, we're well on our way to getting that done. We're able to, through this survey, we're able to target those schools who have not started yet, find out who they are, call them up and say, what do you need to get moving? And then the, the, the second goal, probably the one that the board might be most interested in, is by the 2018, 2019 school year, every student, beginning in the middle grades, should have an individual plan of study. So, those are our goals for implementation. Any questions regarding that?
Mr. Roberts?
Would you advocate that we mandate the IPS instead of leaving it as voluntary?
I, I wouldn't change anything that we've set up to this point. I think that we've got really good implementation going forward. In fact, that's a good question. I, I think, when I've presented before, we really haven't talked about, when is the school year when all the students need to have one? We've, we've started with, and I think wisely, we've started with just the implementation part of it. But when we talk to schools about, okay, by eighteen, nineteen, you need all of your students to have one, they're looking at us like, what are you talking about? They already, we already thought that was supposed to be done now. So, I, I think we need to set that as a state, as that, that's our goal, and just keep moving forward as we have. So, what's next? So, this spring, actually tomorrow, we're meeting with an external group, our IPS Advisory Committee, made up of counselors and principals from across the state. We're meeting with them. They're going to jump in and help us vet all our resources, our trainings, our timelines. We're meeting with them tomorrow. We're going to, in the spring, we're going to continue with Career Cruising trainings, starting at the February CTE conference, which is a great conference in Manhattan in February. And then further trainings around career education, career advising in the, in the spring, and probably a similar tour to what we took, what we took on last year across the state, or earlier last year. This summer, ongoing professional development regarding implementation, opportunity to sign up for the preferred vendor service through Career Cruising. And then in the fall, more technical professional development related to Career Cruising, the product side of it, and then the process side of it, the non-technical professional development in the fall. So, last slide, the impact an individual plan of study can have really resonates with many of our other state-level outcomes. Higher graduation rates. We think an individual plan of study, if done well, can increase our graduation rates across the state, because you will have a more engaged student who's taking courses based on their career interests, not based on somebody's idea of what's success for them. Higher student success rates in post-secondary. I know this is very important to the board. We think that through an individual plan of study, students can, and their families can make better decisions, more informed decisions about their choices after, after high school. And that individual plans of study, if done well, can lead students to industry-recognized certification. It can lead them to completing that first year of college, the retention rates. So, we really think that it's, it's, individual plans of study really play a big part in that. And then lastly, for the school systems, a quality IPS program can positively impact all five Rs of our accreditation model. And I know that Scott Myers is working very closely with, with, across the state, and we need to work with him closely and his team with accreditation to make sure schools understand that an IPS can really impact your accreditation as well. That's all we have for the board today. We'll stand for questions.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. I really appreciate this report. In fact, I found some things quite interesting in it. I personally think that without the schools doing a good job on the IPS, they will never reach our board goal. I think that it's the key to the whole operation. And so, I found a couple of things really interesting. You know, when you go out, as you ride with Randy in the car around, you know, so many schools, you understand that they're all in different places, as this shows. And how many schools think that if they have an individual folder with a kid's name in a filing cabinet, and they have their schedule on it, that that's an IPS? And, and moving away from that. And I think these charts are showing we're gaining there. I, I think we're going in the direction. So, that was positive for me to see this going on. I think it'd be interesting if there's a way to overlay question fifteen on how often the updates are. If you could overlay it with the kind of implement, implement, number ten. If you, now, we're going to come out today. So, if you take it and, and see if there's any correlation between the two. I think that, that would just be interesting. I'm not saying you ought to do it, but I, that would be interesting to see that, and then compare it to if any of the outcomes changed differently for the schools on the graduation rates and on the, I think that, which model is the most effective? However, I do think it depends on the school, on which model they use, and the people involved using the model.
Right.
Because I kind of feel like this might be something like, doesn't matter if you have private, public, or charter schools, it's all about who's running it and who the people are. So, you know, you've got that factor in it. But I just, I would think those would be interesting things to know. But I was really pleased with these, because I think, if you're like me, and you believe the, this IPS is, is a really basis for if our vision is going to work, I think this is good news.
And we're going to rerun this survey this spring, next fall, and the following spring. So, we're going to have four sets of data, and we can make those tweaks that you're suggesting as we go along and start looking at the data in a different way and a deeper level.
As we move to see if this really is going to make a difference on our outcomes.
Now, this is just a survey on the implementation, on how schools are doing with that.
Yes.
You're getting into a broader question and a more serious question about what's the value in an individual plan of study? What's the data that shows us that, that it validates that? And that's where, if we move to these kinds of conversations, are we seeing graduation rates go up? Are we seeing more students complete one year of post-secondary? And are they following the plan that they listed while they were in high school, and they, part of an IPS is putting down a plan? Are they following that plan? We think there's a lot of value in, in looking at those kinds of things, and not a checklist. Yes, we have one for every student.
I think the IPS meets the each in our vision. And I think it's going to drive their outcomes. That's my viewpoint. And so, I'm really stuck on the IPSs, and that they're in, and that's what I've been telling my superintendents. If you guys want me to carry a different message, then you better be telling me.
We absolutely appreciate that message, yes.
Jim Porter.
Thank you. Two things, as I, as I visit with groups, it, it's like everybody's thinking, well, it's about time, you know, this makes sense, you know? And, and so, I'm not seeing any resistance. Are you?
The only pushback that we've heard is, you're telling me my eighth grader needs to choose a career.
Which is not what we're doing.
Right. This is, we, we all, we, we have one slide that we use often with every group, is, this is more about career exploration than it is about career selection. We're, we're trying to move the career exploration years that, for my generation, happened the first two years of college, back into high school. And so, that's, that's the value in an IPS, is if you're interested in, if you're, if you're interested in engineering, then you have multiple experiences while you're in high school around jobs that are related to engineering, including advanced manufacturing. You go and look at a, at a, one of the big industries in Wichita, and you go look at, you know, those types of things. So, it's, it's really important that we focus on that this is not career selection, this is career exploration.
And the next question is completely unrelated to this presentation. I'm on the, we, we had the Student Voice Committee, and one of the groups that we were interested in visiting with was the career organizations that we meet with next-
Next month.
Next month. Is there going to be a possibility for us to have some interaction with, with, with feedback from students about-
CTS or lunch?
Yeah.
Oh, Citizenship Day.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
It's already scheduled. You'll have lunch with them on Wednesday, and then we blocked out another hour and a half, just to be able to, to meet with those folks.
Okay. If I'd read all my, I probably already knew that, I should have already known. But thank you very much.
Yeah, that's good.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, sir. Well, first of all, I have a real concern that you said that at least one administrator has made the comment about us wanting a child to determine in the eighth grade-
That was actually a parent.
Oh, okay. That makes me feel better, because I thought we need to do something about that, because, and that's, and that unfortunately, oh, I shouldn't say this, this won't be politically correct.
Oh, please, please, you're leaving.
But that's the, that's, okay, that's the-
You're running shots.
That's the unfortunate thing, and you see it on TV, they say all these crazy stuffs that people want to believe from the internet, from how things get passed, because that person will go to church maybe and say that, you know what they're doing at my school and my district? And then it's, it's believable, unfortunately. Okay, that was it. My question was on the, the number ten, the implements, implementation slide, and I was just curious, how many career advocate systems, people are hiring districts-
Very few.
Very few. I'm, I'm with a-
Seaman High School, North Topeka has one, McPherson has, has a career advocate model. To our knowledge, that's, those are the only two school systems that are employing that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'll just throw in that Wichita has a model. It's been there, I, but we had it several years before I retired. Career advocates.
You hired someone outside of the district?
Correct. They were not a certified person either. They were, actually, one that we hired at Northwest, who's still there, was a college recruiter. A question I have, and maybe you've done this behind the scenes, but when we say an IPS, and, great data, by the way, so don't take this as not respecting the data that you presented to us, but do we have rubrics that guide people in terms of, this is what a really good program looks like, and here's an emerging program? You know? So, are those, and, and those could be guiding you, but in the field, it oftentimes helps us to understand IPS, well, what's a really good IPS program? What models do we have? And what, where could I go to find out more information from my peers, or, you know, in the state or outside the state?
Absolutely. So, Kathleen has put together an implementation guide that has a sample of who should be part of your team, when you meet with the students, what you talk about, all of those things in one implementation guide. We want to make sure it's, it fits with what schools, you know, their current situation. So, we're going to take it before the external, our advisory committee tomorrow, in front of the experts. The, they're not the Brain Trust, but they're, they're higher than the Brain Trust, whatever that is.
Thank you.
And so, that's something that, and we also have, part of the accreditation model in the rubrics, there is an individual plan of study rubric as part of the accreditation model.
Okay. Well, it, it-
Now, it's, it's more high-level and broad, as opposed to Kathleen's very detailed, here's a, here's a cut-and-dried way to do it.
Well, folks need to know what a good program looks like. You know, and, and especially those who are starting out, because a good, a great program could be just hiring somebody and saying, hey, go do it.
Right.
But finding out that these schools are already doing it, have a counselor model system, or an advocacy system, or a seminar system, you know, is all part of that. So, yes, thank you very much. It's really important to us as a board, as you've heard, that we implement this with high fidelity. And we don't turn it into a checklist, because it could easily become that, you know, and that it's really about each student, and the schools meeting it. This is kind of one of our highlight programs, you know? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, good data. We look forward to seeing the data continue to change and move forward, you know, over the next years.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the end of the meeting, which yesterday we had, we asked you for your information about, you know, what's been going on and any board agenda items. I would just offer to the board another opportunity to, if there's something came up that, between now and yesterday, you want to share with the board, that you forgot, you know, and- Yeah. Sally and I had a communications meeting with Denise and Randy this morning, and Denise, would you like to share the postcard, kind of pre-planning that we did, or planning we did, so that- They'll love it. I would just say to you that we're, we're upgrading, or we're not upgrading, but we're moving forward with a little bit more aggressive, a presentation of the postcards that we've been doing over the last three years.
And what we're thinking about doing this year is kind of doing a multimedia approach with, with the postcards and, and our approach for communicating with the legislators. And so, one of the things that we thought we would do is we, we've, we're going to schedule out the messaging, but we'll have the postcards, but we're also going to do kind of a lead-in with a video from Randy each week. So, we're going to have an opportunity for two touchpoints to that group. What we're also planning to do is that we will, on the six outcomes, so kindergarten, readiness, and, and the sixth one that I'm including is civic engagement, working that in, we will develop actually eleven postcards for that one, for each of those. So, each of you will get a personalized postcard. So, we want to be able to promote in your districts some good work that's happening in a school. So, we'll be looking to you to help us identify if you have any schools that we can use as, as doing some really great work, not so much describing the program, but just highlighting the school and that. So, that way then, we will get more of a personalized approach to each of your Senate and House reps, so that, and then you'll also have that personalized postcard then that you can share with your constituents. Does that sound like a plan? And we thought, what, as far as the theme goes, that we would use the moonshot quote, John Kennedy's quote about, we choose to go to the moon. And so, each week will be a different phrase of that, to give it a series, that'll build the entire statement. And then on the backside of the card, it will always have the full statement, so they know the context of what they're getting, but we think it exemplifies the work that you all are doing.
Questions? So, yes, we're looking forward to this. This is a reach for us as well. It, it's, it's a little more work, and it will focus on the vision and, and the outcomes. And it will also, just to be real clear, you'll have your picture going on the card to your districts, representatives. Now, mul-, several of us have multiple, you know, representation. You know, so, we'll, we'll, yes, yeah, yeah. So-
So, we'll be assembling a list- So we'll be assembling a list with all of your districts and all of your representatives, and making sure then that that card gets across the street to the right person. And then you'll also have it electronically so that you can share it out again through either your social media channels or through email to your constituents as well.
Just an upgrade for moving forward. And thank you, and, and for helping us put this all together.
You're welcome.
Great deal. Any other, Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to, first of all, compliment you and Sally, and all of you three, all three, all of you that have worked on this, about these postcards. I think they've been excellent, you know? And I have used them on social media, and I thank you. I think I would like to commend you for that. But what I wanted to bring up, because I've been thinking about it since, well, actually started last night when I saw, I was watching TV and I was outside, and I was discussing it this morning. I, I am very concerned, and I probably all share my concerns, but I want to guess, I want to make sure we do keep it a real top priority for next year about our teacher shortage, and about the teacher morale and teacher pay. I mean, there's so many things involved in this. KCK was on TV last night, and they lost 250 teachers last year. Teachers are moving across the line, they're moving other districts, I mean, they're doing everything, you know? And, and I, I'm very concerned about teachers. And, you know, so anyway, I really want to hope that we continue our focus on this. I mean, granted, and plus the fact that we need these counselors, this, this thing about suspension, that brought up a whole new thing. I mean, there's so many things related to teachers that we desperately need, and I just want to keep us laser-focused on that area.
It's a great reminder that we should be, as you said, focused on, on teachers and, and all the special things they make happen in our buildings every day, besides their core issues of which they are, are charged with in terms of academics. They do so much more. They're so much, so valuable.
We all know that the teacher is the number one influence on a child's education, and so we must keep that teacher, you know, we've got to keep the child foremost, but we've got to keep that teacher way up there.
I agree. And it should be part of every meeting. Thank you. Any other? Otherwise, we'll move on to board travel. Any changes? Any additions? Sally Cobble?
Well, if you will notice, the page handed out to you does not have any of Sally Cobble's travel on it. That's because I forgot to turn in my travel.
Thought you were going to do anything.
Well, I kind of thought that, and then I looked down at the darn calendar, and I have handed to Peggy my travel yesterday, and the majority of my travel, I am needing a salary, only because my IMAC, no, EMC is what I'm going to, no, IMAC's what I'm going to. And then I'm going to Dayton to do a civic day for them, but it's on my way home from a board meeting. And I have three, didn't I? KASB Conference is January 12th. Well, I may, that may be a goofy, anyway, so I'd like to add that to my travel, please.
Any other additions? Deana Horst?
I need to add Manhattan on the 21st of, of December for legislative workshop.
Carolyn, Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. My dear friend just hit my bad arm, she forgot.
I'm so sorry.
I don't know why people want to touch me, even when I'm in pain. But she was taking care of me. I need to add juvenile justice graduation on December 23rd.
Great.
And then I wanted
And where's that?
It's here in Topeka.
Okay, great.
We've attended it before, and I thought Carolyn wasn't on there, and I thought she ought to go, too.
Sure.
And then I just want to say, and it's fine if you do not want to approve this, but you know, yesterday I shared with you, and it's on there, the first meeting of the community on race meeting that I was invited to and was told it was because I was on the state board that, that I could represent our K through 12. And so there is another meeting scheduled, and so I don't, I thought if nothing else, I, I could, if you didn't know, I want to pay for my salary. I could go to it and get the information, and then I could make to the chair or let you folks know whether it really is something that we want, that you want to be involved in, because it's the, the three universities were represented, KU, K-State, and Warshburn were the three. So that was the only other thing. So, and that's up to
So when's the second meeting, Carolyn?
It's December the 28th. What'd you say?
Your 12th.
Okay, okay, so, so, and I will give you all a report to whether you think it's something you'd want to
I believe we need a motion to approve travel as presented. Kathy Bush, seconded by Deana Horst. All those in favor of the travel as presented and amended, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight, zero. I would like to remind all the board members that January 9th, I think that's January 9th, is our next meeting, 10th, oh, right, 10th, I'm sorry, 10th, got it right here, says 10. January 10th, and we start at 8:30 in the morning with the, a reception and the swearing in of new board members. We'll be welcoming in to our, our, our board, looking forward to that. We also have, it, it, the lunch is going to be on Wednesday, the 11th, okay? But on the next morning, we have CAC, okay? And the night before, right now, we can anticipate unless there's some significant change, state of the state, you know? So we've got two really long days, you know, before us, and so come, come rested and ready. Also, I want to remind you that we'll be electing officers in leadership positions with our, and, and representative positions by the board, so make sure you're looking at, at that information. I guess the, the last thing I have to say is, is, Carolyn, we'll miss you. We love you dearly. You have served the state of Kansas excellently. You have an exemplary board member. Personally, for me, you've been a mentor, and thank you for the scoldings. I, I needed them and I appreciate them. I know they were in love, you know? Your friendship is, 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 is without, without doubt going to be a valuable thing for me as I move forward, and I hope you remember us as well. Are there any last comments that you would like to make?
Of course.
I invite you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, first of all, I am very honored that I was able to serve our children of Kansas for these eight years, and so thankful that I was able to support our educators. You go into a school and you see love and nurturing, and that's what I see in this, in this department, too. I'm going to miss Nick. I'll probably have to come in and pick on him every now and then, just so he can feel comfortable. But I'm just thankful that I had this opportunity, and I just hope that the board will continue to work together as beautifully as I think that we have worked together. Also, as I leave, there's a lady in this agency who is leaving, and I ran into her by accident this morning, Ms. Loeann Snyder. She's sneaking away from here Friday is her last day. She's retiring after 50 and a half years. And so we wish her God's blessings, and I just thank God that he has allowed me to be here. Thank you.
Thank God for sharing you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our, our board meeting. Thank you very much. Great board meeting.
And thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate yours.
I'll be back. Thank you. Okay.